Teachers earn extra dollars and help us earn bragging points. I'm really concerned with the Dimension 10s on the student use and performance, 10.4. Do students demonstrate growth after using this? And 10.5, does this product support the performance of below-grade-level students? I mean, that's, to me, is the bottom line. Is this helping students? Not, are we getting better FSA scores? Because, I mean, sometimes I think those FSAs, I mean, you could kind of expect what they're supposed to be saying and what they're supposed to be testing, but sometimes I think some of their questions come out of left field and they aren't the end-all and be-all. I mean, to me, are our students learning is what's important to me. So, yeah, predicting FSA scores, I think, is important, and that's what we have to look at, but I really don't want to be putting all of our focus on passing those tests.
Eric?
I do want to make sure that I point out what a monumental task Dr. Denise has done. This isn't just about i-ready, what she did. What Dr. Denise has created is a template so that going forward, in the next time we get some, this isn't like some very minutia. i-ready is something that touches a large swath of our population. It impacts our district greatly. It's a big project. And so when it comes to renewing, you know, it's a big decision. It's not, you know, do you want to take sugar out of chocolate milk kind of decision. It's a much bigger decision whether you're going to do i-ready or not. But Dr. Denise took it up a notch, and she has created something that, so the next time we have a big project going through, we can say at the very beginning, how are we going to evaluate this? How are we going to know this works? So that at the end, what you really want is, the projects that work, you continue, and the projects that don't work, you stop. The worst thing to do is not knowing the impact. Know thy impact, right? You've got to know thy impact. That's been one of the things we've been talking about. This allows us to know thy impact. And so we want to continue and expand the things that work and curtail or stop the things that don't work. And Dr. Denise has been able to create this thing that's going to allow us, not just for i-ready, but for whatever project comes out in the future. And so, you know, this is much bigger, and I know this took you a lot of time, but I assure you that we're going to bear the fruits of your labor for years to come. So, thank you very much.
First, I want to say thank you to Natalie, because she really guided me through this process.
I had a lot of feedback.
I and Natalie, but it was really you.
No, no, we had a lot of feedback, and Natalie really guided me.
You're correct, it was Dr. Cantalupo.
That's not true. That's really not true.
Cantalupo, the analytics department, right?
The research department, yes.
What I call analytics.
But really Natalie really guided me through this. And secondly, it may have to be tweaked. I mean, I know it's minutia and a lot of it's real detail, and I get that, but it'll have to be adapted for other products. And if you don't like the way it looks currently, it says draft on top, and that's purposeful. So, if you want to add.
So, if something only has three dimensions, is that making a Rubik's Cube?
Thank you. Thank you. We're behind schedule.
Bada-ba.
I know you did. And the next item we have is Policy Number 3.90, which is a review of our charter school policy. Dr. Roca, again, and?
Where are you going?
Art Hardy, Attorney at Law, Attorney at Board.
Well, Dr. Roca's help just markedly went down from the change in this chair. But I'll do what I can.
That is a beautiful garnet tie, Mr. Hardy.
It is not.
I'm being bombarded with gator noise today, and I just wanted to compliment you on your necktie.
Oh, well, that was completely unintentional, but I'll take the compliment.
Is that blue now?
I think it may be a little blue in there, yeah.
Blue.
All right. Hello, I'm back.
Hello.
So, last time, on January 23rd, at that board work session, we went through in pretty much detail the proposed changes to Policy 3.90, Charter Schools. And I took a lot of notes, some areas the board was happy with, things that we were recommending to delete because it was obsolete, or to add to clarify. You also had some areas that I marked that you wanted us either to clarify that it was correctly stated, and a couple of areas where you wanted us to add language. I've given two different documents. One is what we were calling the messy one, and that one has all the changes we proposed to date, and then highlighted are some things that we discussed at the January 23rd board meeting. And it's the one where you can see the notations on the right-hand column. The other one is cleaner, and it's accepting all the changes that we had, but still highlighting items that have been changed since our last discussion. Should I proceed? Where's Mr. Robinson? He had all the questions.
Well, I mean, I looked through this and...
Let's hurry up.
Okay, let's hurry up.
And let's do it. Getting up here.
Well, I think perhaps the way to go is Natalie has done a lot of work on this.
She has, done a great job.
This is her work, and I think she's delineated where additional changes were made based on the last conversation. So, since you are behind, rather than trying to go through all of them, perhaps just if people have questions or issues.
Just questions, yes. And I think it looks great, Natalie. I think it looks really great. I don't really have any suggestions. It's according to statute, it's according to areas where we've had questions and perhaps significant inquiry from those that are actually applying. So I think it's a good working document.
I think we only had six areas that we either confirmed that it was in state statute, or that we just tweaked and clarified a bit.
Yeah, I think you did a great job with this. Caroline, any questions?
No, I'm fine. I've read the old one, I've read the new one.
So you don't want to go through line by line again?
No.
No.
All right.
Shirley?
All right, then I think the next step, then, would be to have it on a board agenda to advertise the changes.
Yes. Perfect. That works.
And so, just a comment to staff, I think it's one of the benefits of providing the read-ahead 10 days in advance, that the board has had a chance to look at it and fully familiar with it, as opposed to delivering it earlier.
I'll talk to you about that later.
We don't have any questions about this, Mr. Robinson, do you?
No more questions.
Okay, moving right along. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Roca, Mr. Hardy. Now, we'll move into Item Number Six, which is the Equity Policy Review. Al, where was Scott Limpy coming?
He was.
Well, we can probably start without him. We probably caught him a little short by how quick the last item went.
Let's do that. The line got shorter, right? So here we are.
So this is similar to the last policy, as far as the process goes. We had the meeting with the board last month, received feedback from you. Instead of Natalie, Al was the one who took it back and tried to incorporate the changes. I think there were two primary issues that were raised. One was the question of what to do about complaints about board members. I think based on the conversation last time, as well as our further follow-up, Al's further follow-up primarily, looking at other districts, as far as complaints against board members, we agree that the policy does not need to cover that, that there are other mechanisms for that to occur, assuming the board agrees. So the policy will be silent on that. The second issue had to do with verbal complaints, or, you know, in the situation where an individual says there is a problem, and what to do about that. And Al did a bit of a survey of various districts, and I think we may be kind of out in front of that as well, based on what he's learned from other places.
Yes, and some of the other districts that I spoke with, if the person does refuse to put it in writing, it's not considered an official complaint with them. But one school district, I believe that it was Hillsboro, did say that if they found in what was reported, that it could be something significant for the board or for the school district, that they did reserve the right to still investigate the alleged complaint. So what we are proposing to put in here is almost the same exact language that they have. If we receive something that was orally, and the supervisor wrote it down, that it would still come to me, and as we discussed in our last session, that I would look at it, I would reach out to the person to see if they really did not want to file a formal complaint, but that if it did have something that impacted us, the school board, significantly, that we still could reserve the right to investigate that.
And one of the issues, I know that was a concern that was raised, was, well, perhaps one of the reasons the individual doesn't want to file a complaint is because she or he doesn't want their name out there about this. And what I found was, the legislature, I believe, last year added another exemption to public records that specifically exempted the name of anybody making a complaint specifically of sexual harassment or discrimination, not other kinds, but sexual. So, the fact that we are writing something down and perhaps doing even more about it does not necessarily, quote-unquote, "out" the person who was choosing not to file the complaint. But we believe that it's most appropriate for there to be a central repository, the Equity Coordinator would seem to be the appropriate person, to receive those complaints, because an individual supervisor who receives a verbal complaint may not know that there have been others before, but the Equity Coordinator would if we're gathering these documents. So, to protect the board, as well as staff members, we think that's an appropriate way to go. So that's the language that Mr. Harada's drafted here. I think those were the two primary issues that were raised last time.
And I think all too often, there's some innuendo of rumors and this kind of thing, and this, I think, all alleviates, hopefully, some of that and puts it in the right perspective. So I think this is a good policy.
Caroline?
No, I'm fine.
Shirley?
I do, too. There's one thing that, under four, Employee Applicant Complaint Procedure, says consequences may result from a complaint made in bad faith, without a definition of bad faith. I have a little concern about that, that I don't think we've ever taken any consequences against somebody, and I think we all kind of understand what we know, but I would sure want to be made aware of any consequences that would be brought up, and who would make that decision on consequences?
Well...
But any firing and stuff would have to go through the board, correct?
Sure, sure. Any substantial discipline. And that's there, obviously, in the event, and I agree, I can't think of a case where that's happened, but if you have someone completely fabricating something, you know, that's also not the right thing to do, obviously, and we just want to put people on notice that we can take action in the event that were to happen. But I agree, we would move very deliberately before anything like that were to happen.
Good.
Anyone else?
See that?
All right.
Such a good job.
Go forward.
These two would be brought forth on the March 6th board agenda, unless there's further comment from the board.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Our next item is Item Number Seven, 2018-19 Budget Discussion, Mitzi Corcoran and Krista Cutner.
We're almost back.
Kurt Knertl. Sorry, I said Cutner, and I'm sorry. Nothing worsened.
You could just call her the Budget Lady.
That's Eric's name. Yeah, you got through those policies really quick. You're almost back on schedule now. So, good morning.
Good morning.
I believe. So, I should put these in the back. Can you put those in the back, just in case anybody wants to read them? Sorry. So first, I thought we would kind of quickly go through our budget calendar. It's the, kind of, the process of what we do and how we do things. So, it's pretty much what staff uses, it's what we use for the staffing process, the posting of vacancies, and then we also use it for the Department of Revenue's truth and village process, to make sure we're abiding by their 101-day rules. So there's only really one item that we wanted to bring up as a topic. If you look on the very last page, you'll see that there's your next regularly scheduled school board workshop, where we're planning on bringing the actual draft budget and requesting your approval to release that to schools and departments, is the same day as our referendum election. So, we thought it might be prudent for us to maybe move that date. You want to chime in?
Well, obviously, there's some concerns about holding a workshop on the day of the referendum, and would we present a budget that includes referendum funding? It's kind of like holding a Super Bowl trophy before the game is played. And so I would be very apprehensive to present a budget to you that makes certain assumptions. And so our question to you is, we obviously cannot wait till the April board workshop, but would it be of value to slide from the 20th, maybe to the 22nd, that Thursday, and do the budget workshop? That might also free you some time on the day of the referendum, because I know, since some of you have said, are we going to literally be here in the chambers the entire day while the referendum is going on?
So we were even wondering if you wanted to contemplate actually moving the entire day to Thursday, including your meeting?
Yes.
So, that in place of, not in addition to?
In place of, yes.
Is what we were suggesting.
I like that.
So it's the whole day workshop?
Yeah, move the workshop and the board meeting from March 20th. We have time for advertisements and so forth, to March Thursday, March 22nd.
Correct.
The board meeting, too?
The board meeting, too.
Okay.
And then after we workshop the budget, we would have as a new business item for you on your agenda during your meeting to approve to release the budgets to departments and schools, if that's what you suggest.
Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
So that would be... I just have clients I need to reschedule. So that would be all day on the 22nd, and then my Tuesday would be freed up.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay with you, Shirley?
Yep.
Is it possible to change April 17th through the Thursday?
No.
Because that's tax day.
Come on.
No, no, you only have so many days here.
I didn't ask for the other one.
No, that was me, sorry.
It's hard.
Okay, so that was really the only discussion topic on the...
It's a big deal for me.
No, I bet. So that was the only large topic I wanted to discuss, as far as the calendar went, unless you had any other questions on the calendar, we can just go over. The other item I provided to you is the comparison of the two budget proposals for the House and the Senate as compared to our third calculation. And this was just to kind of show the proposals that are out there for our revenues. They are not as good as we had hoped, although there is some good news. The estimating conferences have increased the amount of available revenues. I don't know if that will ultimately change the amount of funding that comes towards education, but one can hope. So I thought we would just kind of quickly go through the two different proposals on the House. It looks very similar to what we are accustomed to seeing as far as the FEFP. They've increased the base student allocation by $75.20 a student, which is good news. They have not changed many of the different categoricals that are out there. And, you know, in total, the total funding per student for Sarasota is 96.23, while at the state level, on average, it's $100. So it's a little bit less for us than what it is on the statewide average, but that proposal does propose more additional funds per student, so we're very happy about that particular proposal. The Senate proposal...
And just talk about Safe Schools, if you would. The Safe Schools money is $926,714 in the House, and it's $1,000,001 right now, today, in the Senate.
In the Senate's proposal. And our current funding is sitting at $950,000. Again, we've had some discussions about that. As you know, the Safe Schools money for us is used to fund our SRO officers, and those contracts do exceed the amount of available funding, so we have to use our other general revenues to support that.
And how many additional?
What's our proportionate share? Do you know?
Our proportionate share of the total?
Yes.
Well, in the House proposal, it's 926, and the total state is Safe Schools, 64 million.
64 million.
And on the House proposal, it's $1,000,001, and the total is 78. Currently, the Safe Schools allocation for Sarasota is $64,456.
And how many additional students do we have?
We actually requested 83 more than they gave us in the funding, but the total increase is 371, which is broken down 25 virtual, 181 charter, and then the district is the balance of 165.
Okay.
And that's FTE. So again, it's not, as we like to call them, butts in the seat, it's the recalibrated, down-to-1.0 FTE funding that we receive from the state.
And in fairness to the Senate, the reason the money is decreased is because they've added more categoricals?
There are four new categoricals that have been added on the Senate budget. So, yes, there's a $45.20 base student allocation, which, again, you know, we use that to fund our general operations of our schools. And so there's a $45.20 decrease. There are four new categoricals that were added. One is funding compression, and basically what that does is it guarantees every school district the statewide average based on the prior year. That's not anything that we are a participant in. As you know, we're a 90% locally funded school district.
Right.
So we don't receive any of that funding. There's also an $88-plus-million allocation for Hope Supplemental Services for the Schools of Hope. We don't have any of those in our district, so we don't receive any of that funding. There is a $40-million allocation for mental health.
And that's Passadomo's bill in the Senate.
And of that amount, we are receiving $613,000 of the $40 million. And then there's a teacher salary increase allocation. Now, I had originally thought that that was the primary reason for the decrease in the FEFP, but then I realized that that was, the 2017-18 best and brightest allocation that was just paid February 15th has been, if you look in the implementing bill, it's been lined out for 1819. So it's in replacement of the best and brightest, the effective, highly effective component. And as you know, we paid $4.3 million, and the allocation is 2.8, and that was 100% state-funded, and it was a bonus. This is a salary allocation, so...
Not a continuation.
Yeah, and there's no FRS on it. If this is an actual salary increase, it would include the FRS component, which would make it a little bit more expensive for that piece of it.
Shirley?
So you're saying that the Senate gives us $2.8 million for this, but we spent how much for this salary increase?
The total was, well, it was a bonus. The best and brightest bonus was $4.3 million.
$4.3.
A little over $4.3 million.
And do they expect us to give them less than what they said, or will they be making this change to, because right now, what happened is, it was done afterwards, and the state had all those dollars, and then they sent it down. And isn't that how the House is still planning on doing it? I mean, the House is still planning on giving these bonuses.
As far as I'm aware, I didn't see anything about eliminating the best and brightest for 1819 from the House side. The Senate side doesn't have it in there, but this is, not necessarily has to be the exact same program, it's for salary increases for teachers. So however that comes out is, I guess, how we choose to do it. The total, oh, I'm sorry.
So it would look that, I mean, they would give it to us to allocate, but, I mean, it looks like the House has more money than what's on this sheet, because the House is giving us money somewhere else that's including this. So I would almost deduct that amount from the amount that the Senate is giving us, because the House is giving it to us someplace else. It really makes it hard to compare apples to apples with this, the way that they have them, so differently construed. But what about the Schools of Excellence? I mean, how are we handling them? Are we doing any of that in the budget, or?
So, it is our intent to maintain a unit allocation process, and then to layer in an assessment of where does the unit allocation process lie in regards to the 90% threshold. And then, once we provide those budgets to school sites, to give them flexibility to say, the unit allocation is simply a guide. You are free to reallocate units as you choose, as long as you stay within your threshold. But to provide that guide to say, if we were doing your budget, here's what it would look like, but you're doing your budget this year, have at it. But our principals have said, don't just give me a number and say, go staff your school, give me a guide. And they're used to going through a waiver process. This is just a waiver process on steroids of saying, stay within your allocation, stay within class size, and go run your school?
Pretty much. We're planning on meeting with the principals that have a School of Excellence and go through the budget office, has got all of the sheets, they're just about completed, to send to the schools, and they'll have a webinar with the school principals and kind of walk through the process with them separately from the traditional process of staffing. And then the only other thing, as far as the House budget was on a statewide average, the increased funding per student was 110. Ours is $53.51 a student, or about 0.67%, so a little less than 1%. And the majority of that is coming from the increase, 5269 is discretionary village increase from the increase in the property values. So the Senate budget is, has more specific pockets or buckets of funding that are for a specific purpose, and the House's increases are more just in general, for the general operations of the district.
The Senate is micromanaging, and the House is allowing us flexibility. Is that what I'm hearing?
Not exactly. What's happening right now is you've got one chamber who's looking at an implementing or implementing bills, and you've got another that's looking at conforming bills like they did last year. So that's got to be resolved, and as I understand it, they're kind of holding some meetings this week, didn't hold a lot of general meetings last week in the House or the Senate, and what they'll do is start on a committee level, probably at the end of this week, and going forward. And I think, looking at what Galvano brought forward last night in his ideas of some new legislation on guns, and with Passadomo's, perhaps, bill going from $40 million to maybe $100 million is what they're talking about now, they'll be shootout in O.K. Corral, I guess, and they'll make a determination, I would think, over the course of the next two weeks, because they want to get out of there on time. They do not want to be late, because they all have to run for reelection. And so I think toward the end of this week, some things will be decided. But right now, it's very fluid.
Right.
Because of Broward and, you know, other things, so I'm not sure. But we were looking at 1% maybe, best case, maybe less than 1% increase.
Correct.
So, I think we're still looking at that. Eric?
Two things. Picking back on when Ms. Brown was talking about School of Excellence, from my point of view, I'm really concerned about the effect that it's going to have on the schools that are not Schools of Excellence. And so I'm going to, for me to vote for the budget, I'm going to, I know something we've talked about in the past, I'm going to want to see that places like M.E. Booker, that their funding for this year, I want to know what it compares to the funding to, you know, last year, because I really don't want to see us in a position where we're, you know, cutting the funding where the people need it the most. And so, I'm just telling you straight up from the very beginning, from Jump Street, you know, how I feel and how I'm going to be voting. And you and I have had conversations about that, and I've talked to...
I think from our analysis that we've been able to see, it's our higher-performing schools that are helping to support our lower-performing schools from a revenue perspective. So we'll have to demonstrate that.
Yeah, I wanted to see demonstrated that that would, if you're going to frame it, I would not frame it that way, but if you want to frame it that way, then I would want to see that they continue to support it. The other thing is, prior to us getting the budget on March 22nd now, March, the end of March is on March 6th, we're going to vote on the new negotiation package. And so I understand, this is a budget, I understand, things on flux, I get that. But using your best guess, you know, how is the reserve fund balance going to end up at the end of 1819, which is the year 2019? At the end of 1819, which is the year two, because we're going to be approving two years? You know, I want to know, what effect is that going to do to our reserve budget? I mean, how is that going to hit us financially? And unfortunately, that's a decision that I need to make on March 6th, which is before you present. So just, I understand it's a rough guess.
Right. I mean, this is why we were using these particular revenues. I mean, that's the biggest thing, is knowing what your revenues are going to be. I mean, it's nice to know what your expenditures are going to be for next year as far as your salaries go, but not having the exact number of the dollars for the revenue makes it hard to estimate, but...
I still got to vote. It's a big dollar.
I agree with you, and it's our, you know... It's our deepest desire that it will end up at at least 7.5%, which is your minimum by policy.
So you're... If I make sure I understand what you're saying, is the guess, as it stands now with a lot of things in flux...
Correct.
And a lot of, you know, caveats and initial, you know, stars at the bottom, is that we're going to end up at 7.5% of fund balance?
She hopes.
At the year of... I understand. There's a lot of caveats. I just want to make sure that I understand what you're saying correctly.
It's our duty to stay within your policy.
I understand it's our duty of policy, but maybe I didn't answer the question right. But do you expect it to be not go below 7.5%? Not what we hope, but your expectation?
And the session will be over March the 9th or earlier.
I understand, but March the 6th, I got to vote. And so I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying that you, right now, you believe it not to dip below 7.5. I understand that that's what the policy says, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly. Am I hearing you correctly? Okay, Dr. Boden, am I hearing her correctly?
Yes, and so as you kind of walk through timeline, is March 6th, we're going to ask you to act on a salary settlement that impacts not only 1718, but 1819. Then to turn around on the 22nd and give tentative release of budgets to schools. That is not your final budget. What we would tell you is if, after receiving final numbers from the state budget, we now have the ability to have cost certainty going into next year, that we are setting... Well, board policy sets that 7.5% threshold, that before we brought you a budget in June, it is going to be 7.5% or above. But we have to move forward the unit allocation process and go through with staffing. But there is not a scenario at which we are bringing you a final budget below 7.5%. Now, what the implications are and other aspects of the budget, that's where we'll have to get some final numbers from the state. But I hope that number is higher than 7.5, but your policy says 7.5, and it will not be below that.
Correct. And there is also, just as... Just so everyone is aware, within the language of the ratification policy is that if the FEFP-based student allocation is below the current years, if the referendum does not pass, or if the FEFP is greater than 3% of the current year, all three of those are... Give us the ability to...
I just want to make sure I understood what your answer was. Is, if I heard you correctly, it sounded like you said, "We're not going to go below 7.5%, but if we do, it's because we're going to end up cutting some places that you can't... You don't know at this point in time what they would be to cut, because it's too early to tell."
Correct. We think we're going to be at or above 7.5 without taking any evasive action in the budget. I feel comfortable bringing you a budget on the 22nd based on our current unit allocation process. If that doesn't hold true, then we will take action before bringing you a final budget.
Based upon the current?
Correct.
And so if we get $100 more, then there shouldn't be any reason to be below 7.5% without cutting anything?
Correct.
Okay, so thank you.
This just seems so abbreviated. I mean, normally, I would have thought that we had discussions about, are we going to be cutting programs? Are we going to be adding? What are our priorities and things like that? And I see, you know, kind of in January and February, those are the kinds of things we used to talk about. And this seems a little shy of what we... It seems a lot shy of what we used to get. We used to get projections on where we were going to be if this is what the budget is. It just seems like we're going to get budgets that, you know, we're going to have to turn around and vote on very quickly without really having a time to discuss about what our priorities are and where and how this is affecting the schools. It just seems like it's been very abbreviated this year and that there really isn't going to be much input from the board.
And so that's one of our topics of conversation, is we did a different process when it came to the capital side of the budget to get some feedback from you. We would like to schedule those one-on-ones to get individual feedback from board members if that process worked on a capital side. But I can tell you, there's not huge conversations around additions to the budget or cuts from the budget because we changed the process fundamentally with a two-year agreement. We now know what our costs are. I think it's a great place to be, is that in prior years, we made these budget projections, and I'll tell you, that every time we came back, it had to have a time date stamp on it because it was hardly worth the paper it was printed on two weeks later. And so the idea that we were projecting budgets every time we heard whispers out of Tallahassee didn't prove to be an accurate process. Also, from our employees' perspectives, is that we had a budget process in which we went through the process, we passed a budget, and then we negotiated salaries, and the perception was, is that we negotiated with whatever was left. In this process, we have cost certainty going into next year. It's a number, I think, as a board you can be proud of, but from the employee side, I think it's a number that they can be proud of. But it does impact the budget cycle in that, yes, we're not having a workshop of saying, "What would you like to add to the budget?" Because we're having conversations of, "How do we hold the line at 7.5?" And so it does fundamentally change the budget process because there's not a lot of discussion from one year to the next now that we know what salaries are going to be. That was the commitment that we made, and you're seeing it impact the budget.
Stay tuned. It's going to get bumpy.
Jane? Caroline?
So, does that mean that we will not have the ability to put forward any suggestions of what we would like to see in the budget?
No, that's where I would like to meet individually on you. But the answer that I will give board members is the same answer that I've given every member of staff, which is, any change to the budget that adds is deficit spending. And so any priority, anything that we would add to the budget, has to rise to the level that we would tap into the reserve to implement that idea.
So if we wanted to add counselors or behavioral specialists, which we've talked about for several years, we have to find a place to cut in order to add them?
It would either have to be a corresponding cut, or you'd have to modify your policy to go beneath 7.5.
But if we come above 7.5, then we don't have to.
Correct. And there is nothing that prevents you from adding units after March 22nd. March 22nd is kind of flicking the first domino of the staffing process that allows our schools in particular to move forward and be competitive in the hiring of teachers. It does nothing that prevents us from coming back in April and May and saying, "Now that we have final numbers, where would we like to alter this budget?" But it allows us to get those principals started in doing their staffing, to go through our surplus placement process, and then to get out on the market and go find teachers for next year.
Okay. Eric?
I was going to say that if you're going to be adding things to the budget that individual school board members want, or you're going to be... Which means you're going to be cutting something, I don't feel comfortable with that being done on one-on-one. I think that that should be done as a collective group. It shouldn't be done at a one-on-one basis. If, say, I want to increase emotional wellness, you know, and decrease the budget, and Caroline wants, you know, counselors and decrease something else, I mean, that's something that we need to talk collectively, not on a one-on-one basis.
I agree.
What the one-on-one does is allows us to understand the issue and to cost it out. If not, you're going to have to schedule a series of workshops in which you throw ideas around, we go cost them, we come back, we throw ideas around. Is on March 22nd, that's the conversation we're going to have. We will have met with all of you, understood anything that you want to put forward, and have costed it out. If you just show up at that meeting and throw out ideas, the answer's going to be, we're going to have to get back to you.
But the final decision will be made collectively?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just still have concerns, you know, with this budget, especially if the dollars come back to us. I mean, we might get enough dollars so that it doesn't trigger something from what we planned on in the budget. Maybe we'll get the 1% increase or more than the 1% increase. But part of that says, "We've got to invest X amount into safety and security, so we have to hire school resource officers or something." Or, "We have to invest it into mental health, so we have to hire more counselors." And, you know, we got more than 1%, but the legislature has told us how we have to put it. I'm anxious about how the budget is going to be coming out, to me.
I just want to make sure we're building a very clear expectation that this is a very lean year, is that we are hoping, we're playing in that 1% area, but we have committed to a 3% salary package. Once we have run the payroll, paid the bonuses, we can look at exactly what our major expenditure is. We can also look at attrition for next year. We see our average salary actually decrease. But I want to build the expectation that when you come in on March 22nd, that it's not going to be a long list of items that we're adding into the budget, because it goes back to, the money simply isn't there. As long as we continue to restrict the required local effort and see no growth in those dollars, we are going to have major challenges maintaining the system, much less providing raises to our employees that even come close to cost of living. And so in economic dollars, year over year, the number may go up, but the economic value of our budget goes down on an annual basis.
This is why the required local effort issue, the rollback of that, is such a daunting, daunting issue for us all. And it is not an issue, in my mind, of saving money and being a tax reduction. It's got nothing to do with that. It's really about other things. And to say that we don't get that money is, again, against local home rule, and it's just, it's very bad for our district.
Shirley? It brings me back again to, you know, we had bus drivers talking to us. We know we're not being able to fill these bus driver positions. We don't have aides on buses. Half of our classified are earning less than $15 an hour. And I was hoping that we could come back and do something for our classified, but it doesn't look like that might not happen next year. And that doesn't bode well to our openings and our bus drivings and/or fixing that problem.
But we already have a two-year deal, a two-year package for the union and for classified workers. So that takes effect July 1?
I don't think it fixes the bus driver issue.
The bigger concern for me is, if we don't grow, the budget doesn't grow, and we're handing out, you know, 4% pay raises, what's our reserve balance going to be like in year three? I mean, we talked about in year two, it's going to be 7.5. It does stand to reason that in year three, it's going to be some number below 7.5 if the budget... Our budgets stay the same as they do now, doesn't it?
Actually, it does not. I mean, we have made no commitment beyond the 1819 school year, is that it would impact our ability to continue to do 3% salary packages. I mean, if our budget continues to grow at 1%, you're tapping reserves. There is a limit to that. And so the expectation isn't that we're going to have 3% across-the-board salary increases year after year after year. You're absolutely right. At the current projection, the 1920 school year will not be a 3% package.
Well, no, what I was saying is, is if our reserve balance is going down as a result of offering these raises, they're still going to have that same pay. We're not going to cut the people's pay. Raises are what the raises are. And so won't it dip down again?
It would not.
Because they're still going to get that same pay.
Well, you still have this churn at which every year you have teachers and staff exit at the top and come back on the bottom. If, on an annual basis, if you did not provide an increase in salaries, you would see about a 2% decrease in that number.
And if our teachers decide that they want to stay and continue to teach here?
We have seen that year after year after year. It's in that 1.5% to 2% range. I mean, I can tell you, there are 361 teachers out of 2,700...
2,700.
Yeah, on the top step. And the old step salary schedule is, you continue to have that. And so if you wanted to project the 1920 budget, I can deliver to you a budget that stays at the 7.5% fund reserve, but I would project a 0% salary package, but then I would go in and decrease salaries by a couple percent.
So you don't think that the top step teachers are going to be retiring every year? There won't be a marginal decrease in them over time?
No, when you look at the distribution of teachers, you continue to get that churn.
Okay.
I mean, we look at principals that are retiring, you look at the executive director staff, is there this continued churn?
That's how it used to be, but now we're adding that 4% or 4.25% on to highly effective teachers. So we are building that up, and we've got, what, 3/4 of our teachers or 2/3 of our teachers highly effective. So to be saying we have a 3% built in, we don't. I mean, we've got a 4% built in for a lot of people. And in addition to that 4%, these are the same ones that are getting the extra $1,200. Some of them are actually getting an extra $5,000 or $6,000 from the state also. And it just looks to me like we're pushing that and we're giving more and more to them. I mean, we've got some of the support staff that are, that I think are getting short-changed in that because they don't get those extra dollars from the state. And while we didn't address it this year, I was hoping we could address it next year in the salaries. But I think we need to be clear, we're not giving a 3% raise. We're giving a 4% raise to most of our teachers next year.
So the weighted average on the instructional side is actually 3.8% when you look at the 3.25% that about 1/3 are getting and the 4.25% that the 2/3 are getting. What we need to talk about is your contractual obligations, which were outside of that salary package, in which you were contractually obligated at a half a percent for your performance teachers, and you were contractually obligated for longevity for your grandfathered teachers. And so when you say... I say it's a 3% because the other was contractually obligated. But the weighted average is, it's close to a 3.7... Well, it's exactly 3.75 for classified. Weighted average is about 3.8 on instructional. Unless something changes fundamentally about the way schools are funded in this state, i.e. the way we calculate required local effort, one cannot anticipate future salary settlements in that ballpark. That just has to be a clear expectation as we sit here today. That's the elephant in the room.
And Shirley, just to address some of your concerns, the union has agreed to jointly fund a salary study to look at targeted positions, and I do know bus drivers is a big one. I think some other, like SLPs and some other specific positions.
But we can do the study, but there won't be any money to do anything about it.
Yeah, when I was on SCF, we did a study, and then we didn't have the money to do it, and they got... You thought they were mad before we did the study? They were upset, because then they could say, "No, I deserve this. You did a study, and I'm getting paid this, and I should be getting paid that." And it just creates havoc. If you do not do... We cannot do a study. We can't make promises to people if you don't deliver. And if you do a study, it's implied that if people should get paid more, that we should. And so we're going to get ourselves in a real bind and a jam if we, you know, can't make promises that we can't deliver upon. That's worse than not making the promise at all.
I guess that's all the more reason why we need to pass this referendum. I mean, there's some growth in that that we'll get. I mean, that's the growth in required local effort that we get, is through the referendum.
And it's flexible, and we can do with it as we want. And that's the only thing that we have today that we can do with as we want. And that's the only thing that we have today that we can do with as we want.
So on the issue of the salary study, we are less, quite honestly, we're less than a year from opening negotiations for the '19, '20 school year. Is that I anticipate that this cycle of us wanting cost certainty on our highest expenditure, our payroll, will continue. So I anticipate that in January of 2019, we will open negotiations for the '19, '20 school year. Absent a salary study, you go into that negotiation talking about across-the-board raises. If you want to do targeted things, you need a salary study to say, "Do you want to do 3% across the board? Or do you want to do 2% across the board?" And implement the recommendations of the salary study. If you don't do the study, that's fine. Matter of fact, it simplifies negotiations, but it doesn't address some of the disparities that all of us know exist in the system. It provides us a blueprint of, there's X amount of dollars. How do you want to distribute it? Do you want to address inequity? Or do you want to do across-the-board salary packages? Or a combination thereof?
I would like to do the salary schedule. Excuse me, losing my voice.
I agree. Anything else? We're scheduled to go to lunch now, but do we want to continue with this? I note that Kathy Evi is in the room. And do we want to have lunch now? It's 12:15, or do we want to continue?
Continue.
Let's continue.
Continue.
We need to have a break now.
Do we need to move all this stuff?
So that the staff can have lunch.
Okay.
And so we will return at quarter of 1. We're now on a lunch break. Thank you.